Where was our two-minute warning? You gave a three.
Let me know when you're ready to go.
Good morning.
What's that? Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Litchfield Board of Selectments meeting for the evening of August 25, 2014. The selectmen have just come out of a paperwork review, and I'll now ask Ms. Hogan-Camp to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is a review of items for consent. We have, under items for consent, the minutes of August 11, 2014. Accounts payable manifest, the amount of $28,675.49. Payroll manifest of $44,418.58. Renewal of a junkyard license for Mr. Warren Adams. Approval of the MS-1, which is a report of the town's valuation to the state of New Hampshire. Are there any items that any members of the board wish to take and remove from consent? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Hugh.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of consent by Mr. Lemire, a second by Mr. Bork. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 4-0-0. Let the record reflect that Mr. Brunel is away on business and has an excused absence for the evening. Okay, just for people's information, we will be going to public input no earlier than 6:30, so it's about 25 minutes from now, so... Okay, next item is Administrator Report, which is a warrant article list for 2015. Mr. Hawk.
All right. Short and sweet on this one. Just to advise you, I've started a list of possible articles for 2015. At this point, the only two things on my list are the new enabling legislation from the review of the municipal association's legislative bulletin. Feel free to add items to the list, and we can discuss at a future meeting. You know, just earlier is better than later on these. And, you know, I have no recommendation one way or the other. I go through, when we get that final legislative bulletin and mark up, you know, hey, this is enabling legislation, and start a list. But that... Not, again, we won't be getting back to it for a while, but just I wanted you to know it's out there, and it's kind of a collecting spot.
Are there any questions from the board on this? So if any of the members of the board have ideas for warrant articles, please let Jason know, then he'll add them to the list so that we can take and review those come... When we get closer to budget time, so...
And it's a shared document, and you're welcome to add, if you have anything you just want to add on yourself and just type it in, be my guest.
Okay, my apologies to the board, one of the items that I skipped over by accident was the request for any items for other business. Do any members of the board have items that they want to discuss?
I've got a few things I'd like to add. One being flagpoles. I'll put that down.
Being what?
Flagpole.
Flagpole?
Yep, up front. And then the other one being London Dairy Gun Club.
Fishing game?
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Mr. Hope, why don't you continue on then with the old business?
All right, going to old business. I'm going to just add for information, one item on the consent agenda. You guys approved the MS-1, which is our report evaluation. Just the information, the useful point here is the value on which taxes will be set is $823,865,848. This is an increase in the tax base of $7,526,794 from last year.
Woo-hoo, worth more!
Enough little, enough pieces of construction, renovation, pickups, that's where we end up. You know, we have seen some new houses this past year. To translate that into tax rate, what does all that mean? You know, it ends up being about four cents on the tax rate.
Yeah, geez.
So...
Can you repeat the valuation total again, $823 million, what? And the delta is? Okay.
Budget schedule. Based on our plans for workshop on the 13th and expected small-scale follow-up on budgets after that, I put together a schedule that I'm planning on suggesting to the Budget Committee, pretty similar to last year. Shows us with four main nights. What this does do, that it didn't should do last year, this adds a definite date for our fiscal impact warrant articles and edits, and that date being December 11th. So that gives us a target to get our revisions done and our warrant articles that have a financial impact tied in with them. You know, because that's come a little later in the process in the past, so I wanted to see if we could put all of that to bed a little earlier. And if people are generally okay, I mean particularly with that, that deadline's kind of the most notable thing. If you're okay with this concept, I'll share it with the Budget Committee.
No, I know that it's important, it's especially important to the Budget Committee while they're considering all of this. The earlier, the better for them, and with a compressed schedule for public hearings and stuff, so...
Yeah.
I think it's good. It gets us all in the ballpark at the same time.
Any members have a problem with that going to the Budget Committee? Nope, no. Okay, Jason, why don't you just follow that along then?
I'll share that along then. Conservation land purchase. The closing is scheduled for Thursday, the 28th. Joan McKibben has been coordinating with Council and Title Pro, the closing company, title insurance provider. Looks like all of the necessary documents are here. I think I mentioned, as you were looking at manifests prior to the meeting, the last piece, the last manifest for a check for closing costs and title insurance I just got tonight, so we plugged that in. Cruiser replacement and potential sources of funds. Last meeting, we talked about the need for the cruiser replacement. Just to recap, the issue we have there is Car 5 being out of service with estimate of about $14,000 needed for repair. The context for our other vehicles, Cars 3 and 4. Car 3 has 29,714 miles, this was as of August 21st. Car 4, 44,980. Those are the so-called new cruisers. Car 6 is 85,381. Car 5 is out of service. Car 7, detailed vehicle, has approximately 105,000 miles on it. And Car 8, another detailed vehicle, is currently out of service as well. At the last meeting, the direction was to proceed with plans for replacement of Car 5, and I was to come back with options on how you might fund that car. So, first point is going back and looking at where expect would be in this current year's budget. I went back, updated, reviewed my projections for the year. I'm still showing us spending around 98% of budget. Numbers look slightly better than the last time I did the full analysis of it, but only by a few thousand dollars. Nothing significant enough to absorb the full cost of a new vehicle. So at this point, I would not recommend committing more than $10,000 from the general fund for that purpose. I continue to share you, under the reference section of the portal, I have linked in my projection spreadsheet, so it's usually pretty updated as new surprises come in from town. Departments. I put together also then a memo listing some other potential sources of funds. There's a variety of different options to consider here, as well as to think about whether the intention is to buy outright or enter into a new lease purchase. Certainly, some of these options are not ones I'd wholly recommend, but you asked for options, there are possibilities that are out there. In those cases where some source is identified for commitment now, that source can be replenished with year-end funds if available. What I took sort of as the main intention here was to give you all some information that you would be relatively comfortable making a commitment to buy one or more vehicles now with a worst-case funding strategy in mind. So with that, I can walk you through what I outlined and saw as some possibilities, and then certainly discuss and answer some questions from that. And already mentioned, you know, not more than $10,000 from general fund. You know, I'm pretty comfortable with my projections and provision for the unexpected within those numbers. There aren't any significant expenses that I can recommend postponing at this point in order to make up that kind of number. Most departments are already contributing to the overall expected savings that I see in the budget. The winter maintenance fund, up to $25,000. Right now, we're carrying the cost overages for winter sold and contractors from the beginning of the year in the operating budget. My 98% number includes the early-year numbers as well as my projections for what I think we're going to encounter through end of December. And I did not, I have not shown in there the use of any of that capital reserve fund. Then again, the circumstances of this past winter are exactly the type of situation this fund was created to address. So we're basically carrying it from other places in the budget, and our budget is tighter than it would otherwise be if we, since we haven't tapped the capital reserve fund for that type of situation. Water district refund. This is unanticipated revenue, still awaiting acceptance and appropriation, the amount of $16,752. I'll be honest, I've put off the acceptance, thinking we were having other public hearings. Since it's over $5,000, it needs a newspaper notice, so I've been trying to bundle our newspaper notices, and then we keep postponing other hearings. I had been considering recommending using this for partial implementation of the wage plan this year. Decision is not to do that, then this could be used for other purposes. Town hall timber. We reserved funds in 2012 from Timbercut at Town Hall for further grounds improvement at Town Hall. This was through acceptance and appropriation of unanticipated funds by the board. You could reallocate those funds for another purpose, since they're not bound by town meeting or other action. Again, only about $2,000. Talon Hall roof. We're now getting into the section where these are not my top recommendation choices, but they are options you have on the table. Talon Hall roof. Defer this project for a year and reassign the funds. We had a warrant article for $43,120. Funds were raised by warrant article from the fund balance, so there isn't a current year tax impact raising them. There's a possibility of replenishing the funds from a future article from fund balance or a year-end encumbrance as available. Assessing, up to $42,000. Reassign all or a portion of this year's savings for next year's revaluation. The revaluation is a contractual obligation. Thus, the remaining balance needed next year would be part of a default budget. We need $106,550 next year for revaluation. If we carry over this money plus balance saved, we need to budget $54,000 next year already. Last one, about $35,000, $36,000 sale of property. Reconsider the decision made by the board in July and assess the penalty of 15% of assessed value on the sale of tax-deeded property as allowed by RSA 8090. Court case on this is, shown the legislative intent was, this penalty can be seen as a brokerage fee for the town for marketing and disposal of property.
So the other question, which I didn't hear you answer, is if the town have any success locating a cruiser?
I think we have one located. Chief and I talked end of last week, and it looks as if the vendor that we use for setup, MHQ, has found one. We've been through, we've been through several potential options over the past week. One was, we thought one was available, that one went away, then it looked like there was one that was more expensive. The most recent option is back to being pretty close to state bid price again. I think, Frank, I had talked to you at, near the end of last week, and we were looking at a concern that the vehicle available was going to be several thousand dollars more than we thought. And that one now is not available, so it looks like we're back to a vehicle close to state bid price. So, a vehicle will be there. You know, the ballpark that we're looking at for vehicle plus setup is around $40,000.
Did we ever, did the chief ever get a firm estimate from London Dairy Ford? I know he came in and said there's what, $14,000?
It was about 14.
He ever get an estimate drawn up?
Um, I have not seen a full itemized one. You know, I have the notes that we went over last time that listed the... Oh, right, that listed all of the components associated with it.
Why would this cruiser be, why would a cruiser potentially be more than the state bid? From where you have to buy it from?
From where you have to buy it from, and what is factory-installed versus not? You get a base number, and, you know, so we tend to use that number. Some of the things kick out of the factory with a few more other features on the police model. In fact, you know, the two we have out there now came out of the factory as slightly different models. So, you know, I think what is our Car 3 was a couple thousand dollars, then Car 4, just because it came out of the factory with a couple more things. They're all sort of under that state bid umbrella, but they don't make them one size fits all. And to be fair, we're also late in the season at this point. So what we're buying from, you know, when I refer to state bid, the state we're referring to and the bid we're referring to here is Massachusetts. New Hampshire state bid was done beginning of this year. So we're buying Massachusetts state bid at this point.
When you say the bid was done, all the available cars were out?
All the available cars were out.
Right.
So, you know, what ends up happening now is that we're working through the Mass state bid program, because that's, you know, our vendor that does set up and install is a Massachusetts company, so...
Where does the number 14,000 come from in reference to the repair of the cruiser?
That was the estimate provided by London Dairy Ford.
So that includes a new engine, new front end?
Yeah, those were all of the things that I had from the chief's note last time there. That was... Engine replacement, radiator-associated hoses, water pump, transmission, brake line and hoses, rear end suspension.
All right, now, he only, he only got an estimate for the suspension, right? The other ones were just a verbal estimate?
Uh, yeah, the suspension was the detailed quote.
Right.
The remainder was the verbal estimate of all of the other pieces.
And we, so at this point, you don't know if we got a written for the other ones?
I am figuring that we probably did not pursue it any further, given the direction we had coming out of last meeting was start moving on another car and come back with a funding piece. So, I will be honest, we did not take the direction that we were going to double back and rethink again all of the issues on Car 5.
So the question is, does the board wish to go forward with the new cruiser? And then the second question to follow on is how does the board wish to finance that?
Well, if I can take a second, I'd like to go through these funding alternatives.
Okay.
In my personal opinion, I would not want to touch the winter maintenance fund. The water district refund, all for it.
Before you go on from that, I believe Mr. Hope anticipated using that also to pay for some of the overage and plowing and that type of stuff as well?
Which one?
The water district refund?
Nope, I have not, no. No, I, at the moment, I am covering all of winter, including the overage. That's in the 98% spend of the budget.
Okay.
Right, and you had said that last meeting, that was why you said there was a possibility to use the winter maintenance fund, because you felt like you were making up all the differences already?
Right, exactly. I mean, you know, we're eating $20,000, $25,000 in the operating budget right now from cutting back in other areas to make up for winter.
Right.
Because we haven't pursued reimbursing ourselves from the fund for it.
So Talon Hall timber, it's only a couple thousand dollars, it's not going to make or break it. Talon Hall roof, I would not take the money from there. Assessing, I would take it from there before I take it from most of the others. But the question I come up with is the sale of the property, the tax-deeded property that we have. When we voted to not assess the penalty of 15%, I was under the assumption that we were going to be giving that back. But that's not the case. The case for that is actually, it's a fee that we're allowed to, we're allowed to charge that fee, correct?
Yes.
But we chose not to.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So we would, if we were going to try to do that, we would have to go back and make a motion to then turn around and assess the fee, correct?
Right.
And that goes on the assessed value of the home, correct?
Yes.
It goes on the sale value of the home?
No, no, it's the equalized value of the home.
Okay.
I don't know how other people think, but I mean, I've kind of done a little research on this, and it, to me, it's almost like a fine. And I don't think it's unreasonable if we assess that fine slash fee. Those are my two cents.
Mr. Lemire?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my colleague, because I subsequently made aware of information that I didn't have when I voted the first time. And, of course, in my other life, I deal with these quite frequently, and we do assess penalty. Knowing the information that I have now, and knowing the opportunities that were offered to cure the issue that were not taken, I too would definitely vote to reconsider and assess the penalty, because it does go on the assessed value of the home. And I'm thinking it's, I'm looking out for the other taxpayers in town. Here we are looking for money to provide for an emergency vehicle, and we are allowed to do this by law. And I think if we don't do it, or if there's an issue of not wanting to do it even though we can do it, I think it's a bad precedent to set. And I would like to think that in the future that we would have legislative support if we didn't want to do this. I'd like the legislature to say yes or no, not you can. But while we have the option to do this, I think it's important, knowing what we know now, that I would definitely assess that penalty fee, and I would vote to do that. I would reconsider my vote.
Okay. Any other discussions on this?
What is the total amount we need for the cruiser, I'm sorry?
I'm trying to earmark about $40,000 is my target.
Now, is it the SUV or the sedan?
It's the same as we have now, the crossover.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Do you all agree?
Yes, yeah, yes, the SUV.
Right.
Yeah.
I got a quick question. So if we were to decide to go reinstate that 15%, right? Would the car have to be delayed until the house is sold?
No.
So if we decide to do that tonight, you can move forward with going to purchase a car?
Why wouldn't you have to delay that?
Well, what we would be looking to do is identify the handful of the potential sources that you're looking to do. Practically, the, any vehicle you're not going to see for eight to 10 weeks, just in terms of the delivery setup time and the like, so we have no money going out at that point. The, you know, several of these options, you know, I'm looking at, you know, in my mind, my shortest and simplest way to get there was the water district refund and the water maintenance fund. So if you sort of let me play out my scenario on that, it's kind of applicable in some ways, is that the decision would be from the board, hey, we're going to go forward with this. At the moment, we're going to earmark these sources, we're comfortable that we have the ability to pay for it. Okay? We then go forward to the rest of the year. I mean, my preference on almost all of these kinds of things is that when you are taking a non-general fund source, that would be your path of last resort. We want to make a commitment because it's September, that we can cover it. But the more that you can carry out of the general fund, the better, rather than tapping these other places. I mean, in my mind, that was particularly the case, like in the winter maintenance fund, if you went there. When you take that money out of the capital reserve, it doesn't magically go back until you go back to town meeting. I would use as little of that as possible. So sort of the same theory on this, you earmark where your comfort level, so you know we can pay for it going forward. We then finalize it once we have real numbers in hand.
One more question.
Go ahead.
So, if I'm correct, doesn't the previous homeowner have, is it 90 days to...
They have, they've been, they've been through all of the, all of the notice, you're right. There are timetables there that we have to give them notice of ability to purchase. And they then have to come back to us and say, yes, I'm willing to purchase, and then there's a window of time for all of that to happen. All of those windows have expired. That is why we did this in May, I think, and it took us to the end of July until that notice period had elapsed. So then, that's September, the date in September, September 26th was about as close to the 90-day notice window as we could give, because that goes back to the notice we gave them, must have, in June.
So they have up till September 26th?
No, no, they're done. They're done. Their notice expired, their ability to notify us expired in the end of July. Basically, you give them notice at least 90 days before the planned sale of your intention to sell it. They have 30 days to respond with their intention to buy it. At the end of the 30 days with no response, now we move forward on selling it.
So this would also have to be considered as unexpected revenue?
This is going to be unanticipated revenue.
Public meeting and everything else?
So I have to do a public hearing?
Public hearing. Right.
Right. Right. But yes, there are a bunch of hoops to jump through on that kind of...
And that's only once you get the money.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I wasn't sure as far as what hoops, you know, if there was any ability for them to gain ownership of the property again without paying, you know, the full value of the home.
Yeah. No.
Let's also state, to be perfectly clear, the home would have to sell for greater than the fee assessed and the back taxes.
Correct.
Otherwise, it would remain ours, and we wouldn't have a penny. Correct, right?
We would, the action that would be useful now is if you were to decide that you were going to assess the penalty, then I would need to advise the auction company of a revision to the minimum, the minimum bid. Right now, the minimum bid reflects solely what is owed to the town, because that's all, that's the only stake we have in this. all, that's the only stake we have in it.
Yes.
So, you know, right now, the minimum bid reflects, um, you know, from your decision in July, it reflects the back taxes, you know, and our factor for our accumulated costs. So, um, you know, it's, that said, you know, we're looking at, you know, our, our estimate's going to be about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand without, without the penalty, and then the penalty would add, as you can see, about thirty-six thousand on top of that. So, um, that said, the property last sold for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. So I think whether you have a minimum, you know, a minimum requirement that the town needs to get out of it of twenty, fifty, whatever it is, my, I'm guessing you're probably going to see that.
So my personal opinion of this is it's a morally reprehensible and morally bankrupt thing that the board would be doing. To make it clear, um, the town of Litchfield is owed back taxes plus interest from these residents, or these past residents on this house. By selling the house, you collect the back taxes, and you also collect the interest. The other thing that the town is recompensed for is the amount of time, effort, and labor that goes into maintaining the property, as well as this auction, sales, and expenses of the town. So just by selling the property outright, the town fully makes whole the citizens of Litchfield for any money that is owed and any money that is expended to do this. Secondarily, you have a situation where, um, it was stated that this sets a dangerous precedent. Well, this doesn't set a precedent, because any board can take any action that it wants, that's incorrect. Lastly, if this is going to be concerned about a precedent being set, what are you going to do about the old lady that has a house that she's living in and can't move anywhere else, and then you're going to have to take and take her house? If you're worried about precedents, you should be worried about it both ways. I think the Board of Selectmen is now reaching into the pockets of money from citizens who used to live in this town, who were forced to move out because we took their home for taxes, and now are in a situation of trying to use that money and justify it morally in their minds that it's okay to do this to be able to purchase a cruiser. I, I just don't think that's right. It's not the correct thing to do, I think it's morally bankrupt, as I said, and I will not agree to doing that. Mr. Lamir?
Mr. Chairman, who authorized towns to collect the penalty fee?
So let's talk about that. It's in the statute that it says shall charge the fee. We already have a legal opinion from Town Council that says the Board of Selectmen has the ability to abate, and the ability to abate, according to Town Council, also applies to this fee. That's what the Board of Selectmen did. When this first came up, Mr. Hope asked if we could delay the decision on this till he could check with Council. Mr. Hope went to Council, confirmed with Council that we could abate this, and lo and behold, Council agrees. I don't believe that just because the legislature said you can take the fee, that you're forced to do it. So don't try and use what the, it says, um, you already have an opinion that states otherwise.
So I understand your, uh, thought process, um, I just wish it would pertain to everything else. Like, we had a conversation, I mean, if I'm going up ninety-three at, at ninety miles an hour and I get stopped, do I get my penalty fee rebated or abated? No. The, in other towns, and in, in, in this light, we, other towns collect the penalty fee as a matter of, as an incentive, and I'm assuming that this was passed by the legislature to tell, uh, town clerks, or to tell the towns to take this so that it would, so it would impress upon people the importance of paying their taxes. And especially when people have given the opportunity for tax agreements and not necessarily taken the opportunity, when everyone else in town had been paying their taxes in a timely manner, and those that didn't, did, had the opportunity and did come in and avail themselves to tax agreements, and did make their tax bill whole, um, since the legislature said, yes, you shall do this, uh, in, penalty fees are assessed on all sorts of different other functions, I think we'd be remiss in not collecting the penalty fee. Because it would tell, to me, it would send a message, well, it's okay, you don't have to pay your taxes, in, in three years, you can go out and you can make a fortune on your house, because you'll get all your money back, and you won't have to worry about it.
That's incorrect, they're not getting their money back. There are no way-
Well, yes, they are.
Mr., Mr. Lamir, let me finish first.
Yes, they are.
They are not getting their money back, they're getting only a portion of their money back.
They, I believe they're getting the, the entire portion of the house that's sold. It, what if the evaluation goes up from the time their taxes come in? From the town, the amount of money that the town is owed is only their taxes. So they're about, we just heard that our evaluation went up seven million dollars in this town. Okay, so you pull out what the town is owed in taxes, and the potential is there for these people who do not, who didn't pay their taxes, I don't even know them, but that's okay, um, and not pay a penalty fee, and walk away with more than what they paid for the house.
It's possible they could walk away-
On the town's, and we're worried about-
And if property values go through the roof, they could walk away even after you sell the house and take the penalty fee with more than they got into it. So your argument doesn't hold water.
Well, in your mind.
In my mind, and I'm guessing in some other people's mind as well, the bottom line on this is, you're, you're taking money from people for, basically because, as it has been said before, you didn't, or people didn't like the way that they responded to this, and they're going to make an issue of it. That's all it is, you're trying to make a point, period, flat out, ended discussion.
Well, why did the legislature pass the law to do it?
I was in the legislature, I have no idea.
Well, I understand, but they, the legislature mandated the towns do this.
And you also have a legal opinion that says you can abate it.
So we should pursue getting legal opinions for everything to abate? Or all, how many laws are we going to say, well, we don't have to follow this one, but we do have to follow this one? That line of thinking, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't, like, the legislature passed this law, but all of a sudden, we get an opinion that says we don't have to follow it?
It's up to this board what it wants to do, I'm just stating my personal opinion. And my personal opinion is this is bankrupt in terms of its morals.
Okay.
Is there any motions on this?
I'll make a motion to reconsider and assess the fifteen percent penalty fee on the assessed value of the sale.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
I, I much like Brett, feel as though that this fee is kind of like a fine. When you choose not to pay your taxes, I look at this as the penalty for choosing not to do so. I mean, we're not talking about somebody that doesn't pay taxes for a year and we go and take their home, I mean, there's multiple years that this piled up. I mean, at some point, you have to stop and think, if I'm the normal paying citizen, paying my taxes or not paying my taxes, I got to assume that there's a liability, I'm assuming, by not paying them. That's the way I feel, I mean, I-
The penalty for not paying your taxes is the interest assessed on the outstanding balance. That is being collected. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, abstained, motion carries, three, one, zero.
Okay, could I add to this as well? The, uh, funding alternatives? The one thing that I noticed, and maybe there's a reason why, when this property goes to sale, that's tax revenue that we haven't accounted for, correct?
The back tax revenue?
Uh, so this year's wouldn't be allowed to be on that list, but wouldn't the rest of it be on this list, that we are now collecting it?
Oh, the, the out, the, oh, the, 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 the other, the twenty thousand?
Right.
The twenty thousand, uh, the twenty thousand would come back into the general fund, um, that, in theory, that should be just a general fund property tax revenue for previous year's taxes. I'm hesitating only because I'm trying to think of the mechanics of this. In a normal case, if somebody came in and made an old, a payment on an overdue tax bill, it gets processed through, uh, Terry's accounts, and we have a, a general fund account, just hits prior year revenue, uh, prior year of tax revenue. My hesitation is because we moved it off of her books and onto our books, I'm not quite sure where the, 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 the specific account hits. Can I, do you know?
It's, it's, it's been abated by the board.
Right.
So I don't, I believe it goes in the general-
It all go, so then in that case, it probably comes back as miscellaneous revenue to us.
No, it does not-
I know it doesn't go through you, so if we wrote it off, and there's not someplace where we make ourselves whole, it, it would come in as just miscellaneous revenue.
So what are you saying, that it can't be used to purchase?
Um, I'm going to say it may be used to purchase, please don't commit spending it yet, because that piece, the, the accounting of that, I don't know, there's, there's sort of the accounting piece there, it's unusual, it doesn't, so, um, you know, I, best, the best-case scenario is it's spendable, I mean, the normal case, what would happen is with anything else that happens to us after September first, it comes in, it hits, um, it hits as a, a general fund revenue, um, and at the end of the year, if, um, it falls to fund balances available for future, in future years as fund balance.
So bottom line is, we need to have a source of money if you're going to do anything for a cruiser.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be an assured source, so where is the board going to get the money?
I'll, I mean, uh, you, you now have, on this list, every one of these sources is basically an assured source.
Well, you just got done saying that you weren't certain of the property.
No, no.
That's what I asked you.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on. I am not sure about the back taxes piece of it. The penalty, which we just talked about, would come in as unanticipated revenue, that is available as new money. Anything that just hits the general fund is not available for us, that is normal, normal operations. Unanticipated revenue is available for you. So, um, you, you will have, from this list of unanticipated revenue, you'd have the sale of property, so the thirty-five, eight, seventy, you have the sixteen, seven, fifty-two from the water district, those are your unanticipated revenue sources. The, uh, winter maintenance fund is a vote to withdraw from the capital reserve to cover other costs, thus freeing up money in your general, in your operating budget.
Now, if you want to go to morally wrong, that's where I think it would be morally wrong to take the money from, because we told the taxpayer that that was what the money was intended for, to pull it back and use it on a cruiser, to me, would be, you know, not a lie, but deception.
Well, I mean, you, you, you're covering the cost, we, we ate, we ate the cost this year.
With the winter maintenance fund and use that for the cruiser.
You're not using it for the cruiser, you can only use it to cover the winter maintenance. What he's talking about is freeing up the money that he's reserved in the existing budget.
Right.
To go against the winter maintenance loss.
So, yeah, he's going to cook the books with the winter maintenance fund, I wouldn't be in favor.
No, that's, no, 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 Steve, no, but he's saying that the money will come out of the general fund, the, the town budget.
Right.
I understand that.
All right, and in the, instead of using, you know, utilizing any excess it might be for, in that budget, not in within.
I agree.
And if we needed extra winter maintenance money, hit that winter maintenance account.
Right.
So everything-
Well, he's already evened out that whole budget, so the winter maintenance fund is sitting here right now at twenty-five thousand, who's saying we could earmark that to use for the cruiser, which would be-
No, not that money.
Well, it, you-
It's here, it's right in front of me.
You, you know, we're getting lost in semantics, right now-
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen will appropriate from the water district refund approximately, uh, six thousand dollars to cover the residual cost of the cruisers.
I'll second it.
So we have a second, discussion on the motion.
Is it, uh, are you, if I may, uh, are you firm on the price yet for the cruiser?
I'm using the forty thousand dollar.
Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm-
Okay, that's what you're using, okay.
Yeah.
Because you've got thirty, well, roughly thirty-six.
Thirty-six, yeah, plus six.
Plus I said five, so that's forty-one. That goes over a little bit.
Didn't you say six thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion?
Yes. Can we appropriate funds that we have not accepted yet?
All you got to do is hold a public hearing, it's, it's the same thing with the assessment that you just laid upon the, uh, the house that you just, uh, while I'm asking.
Right, right now, what you're doing is you're informally earmarking the forty. You know, we're proceeding, and we need to understand that we have identified a source for it. The formal appropriations that come, both of these things I have to do a public hearing for, because they both exceed that five thousand dollar threshold. So, you know, I will schedule a future public hearing, put the ad in the paper, do the whole nine yards, and then you'll formally appropriate the money there, once we have an intent.
Now, this is predicated upon your concept that it's going to take eight to nine weeks before the cruiser comes in.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming the cruiser's already built, because they're probably switching tooling to the two thousand fifteen models now.
Um, yeah, it probably, yeah, it is, it is built, it's just finding it in circulation and getting it to MHQ.
So I'm guessing that it's going to be here in a couple of weeks if-
Now, and now, it, it, we're, it, it comes in, it needs to be set up, and, you know, we're in the, we're in the-
But we have to pay for it before they set it up.
No.
No?
No, no, we get a final package from it, because i- in, in this case, it's all being handled, um, because it gets all processed through MHQ, it all sort of runs in one bill because they're finding it for us, so.
So this is, so the board's aware, this is what you're laying out the groundwork here, it's for an outright purchase.
Right. I was under that impression.
Okay, so you're not looking to do a lease purchase, which is fine, I don't care either way. But, okay. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries, uh, four, zero, zero. So Jason, what other decision on this do you need?
That's, that's, that's what I need right now. That's what I need right now.
So, right at this point in time, you can go ahead now, based on last, two weeks ago's motion, you can get the cruiser audited on, or pay for it with the, uh, funds that we have appropriated, correct?
Right.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, then, we'll go on to the next subject, which I will now go to, public input. It's, uh, about ten minutes of seven. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Sir?
Joe Cabral with the Southern Brickyard Drive. This has to do with the, uh, rock appeal, the brick yard. What it is, is the, um, the groundskeeper, I have approached the-
Thank you.
-by email, the, uh, the ones that in charge of the field, I got an email from somebody named John, that's going to hold that field, it's going to be on the compost end, but, and they have a crew that comes in and does that, okay? For the last two years, this crew's been taking the clippings and throwing them in the woods, not taking them with them. Prior to this, two years before that, the person that was doing it then was always there removing it, taking it, doing the clippings, putting it in his vehicle, and taking it. This crew takes it and dumps it in the woods. I have been taking my dog deer all this time. Well, she got into that stuff, that's it, that's all of that. Now, if you read in there, it just not only bothers dogs, bothers wildlife, because that's what the vet brought right up to me. Okay, we got deer that eat in there and everything else. He was there again today clipping the grass, I've got pictures on my phone, same thing.
Have you talked to the Recreation Commission?
I did twice, okay, I did two with them and now threes with you. I don't go three with them, I never, I've been two emails with John at the rec department about this, I don't know who John is, okay, I sent it to them.
And you brought this to the attention of the board before?
No, this is the first time.
Oh, okay.
This is the very first time.
I thought you said you've come before.
Oh, no, 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 but I'm just saying, prior to this, the other crew that was there before these people, they always moved it.
I'm surprised they don't mulch into the ground now.
Well, if, if you're mulching it, this is what the vet said to me, it's like a compost. It's not good for the wildlife, and it's not even good for-
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the more-
The mower itself, so that the clippings go right into the ground.
Oh, yeah, no, I have one that does that.
Right, I think, um, most that I know, machines and blades that mulch and push it right into the ground and then you.
Yeah, they got the bag of thing on the, uh, and they dump it right in the woods. I've got pictures of it. It's piled up this side now in there. He's got a donkey. He leaves it right out on the street. Now, I don't know who John is, but John said in his letter the first time, the very first letter, I will speak to them. A month goes by, they're in there and I'm watching them and they're still doing it and I write him another letter. I don't get nothing from John, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. Is it possible, Jason, you can, uh, who's, who's the, uh?
I got a meeting tomorrow night with them.
Okay, so let's bring it up with them.
Definitely.
Is it possible, sir, you could attend the Rec Commission meeting tomorrow night?
Uh, you can try. I'm not gonna, I'm hoping to.
What time is that meeting, Steve?
7:30.
7:30?
Here at Town Hall.
Here at Town Hall.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to find the pictures of the two of them, stupid thing. You know, I mean, the guys should be taking the stuff with them, you know, that's the thing I don't understand, why he's leaving it.
Or mulching it right in.
They never mulch the fields.
No.
No.
They never do. They always bag it.
Anywhere, or should they?
It's just, it's just the common practice for the fields. I don't know if it's, I don't, I really don't know why, but they, they don't do it. I will have to have a discussion with them tomorrow.
Park is in state.
Who is it?
Park is.
I mean, I guess I could see if you're having kids around getting all the particles.
It also smells, when you walk by it, it can smell.
Especially in humid air.
Yeah, oh, I can imagine.
Okay, so, we have a, we have a member that's. Okay, so this will be brought up at the Rec Commission tomorrow night and see what can follow with it.
I don't think it should be dumped.
Okay.
Because I'm not, not only looking out for my own dog, I'm looking out for the other stuff for wild, but this blackbird's in there and the deer were already in there eating it, didn't go right over to the other crack, because it's, it's for milk. That's what's like a lick at them, I guess. That's why even stupid, my dog even goes after it. I'm, I'm moving the thing to take it, I took it right there.
Okay, so we'll bring it up to the Rec Commission tomorrow and see where that goes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other members of the public? Ma'am?
I just want to, um, just, I mean, I know the board knows, but I just want.
Do you need a microphone? Should that, one of those mics be for public?
Thank you so much.
Look at the bottom of that mic and say what the number is.
Seven.
It's number seven for the mic, okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, I just want, I, I just want, I know the board knows, but I want the people to know that this property that the town deeded, we made every attempt to help them out in any way that we could. This is not something that we're just going in and taking someone's property from them because we made every attempt to make a weekly, and I've had several individuals that have paid, that have been right at that deed mark, and we brought them up to, um, 2013 or up to date. If it's $10 a week, or if it's anything, if they need to make a payment plan, or whatever it is, I've had several people come in, we brought them up to date, we've gotten them close to up to date, they're on payment plans, we tried with them. It's not that we didn't try. Um, they just were not in a position to, to be able to do anything, or, or chose not to. Um, you know, Frank, you had said something in, in, you know, the lines of, well, if it's a older woman that comes in and has issues, that's, that's one of the things I thought of. If this was, you can't take and look at the person, you have to look at the situation. If this was an older woman that, you know, heaven forbid she got sick and had to move in with her family, or, you know, and couldn't, we couldn't do anything, and her family came to us and said, you know, she's very sick, can you, can you waive that amount? I can see waiving that amount. We sent them a certified letter, they did not respond. I sent her a letter, um, she wanted some information, I sent a letter out to them, didn't respond. So, it's not that we are not offering, or we're not there to help them, and we didn't do everything. This isn't something that we do. This, in all the time I've been here, this is the first time that we've had to do this.
Understood, and my point was not that we didn't offer, and not that we didn't try and work with the people. That's not the issue to me. The issue was that I was told by one member of this board that this would set a dangerous precedent, we have, we have to do it this way, or precedent is set. My point in bringing up an older person was that, that exact issue now, you're going to have to deed the property. If you're gonna be worried about precedent, you're gonna have to deed the property.
Unless they come to us, or they have a payment arrangement, or, you know, these people did not come to us and ask for assistance. They didn't say, can you waive that 15%? They got a letter, they know about the 15%, but they never came to us, any of us, and said, you know, we're in, we're in a tight situation, can you waive that 15% for us so we can, you know, get back on our feet? We've got nothing. And that's why I'm saying, I just don't, I, I do think that we're set in a presence by just saying, we're just gonna waive it. You know, we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do anything, we're just gonna waive it and just let them have it. That was, you know, that's my point. Right, I can see.
We're, we're hashing over something that's already decided.
Right, but I just, exactly, but I just wanted the people to know, as well as the board to know that we made every effort to help these people.
The board's fully aware of what response you've got and what effort you made, so.
Right, well, I mean, the people don't understand, they just think that we went in and took their property, and I don't want them to think that, because it's not what happened. So, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Have a good night, sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, Chris. Chris Pascucci, he keeps stealing my thunder. I want to ask about the agenda. Up until a couple of meetings ago, the agenda was always posted, and am I doing something wrong? It was usually by Friday. Uh, I go on the town website.
Yep.
Click on the meeting, and then click on whatever, and then it pops up. And I just wanna know, is it not being posted or is it moved someplace else?
Uh, that's a good question. No, it has not been moved, so it, if it hasn't been posted, it's just that the Friday afternoon process of electronic.
I think in today, maybe mid-morning, I didn't see it, didn't come out after.
No, you know, the best thing to do, Chris, if you don't see it Friday afternoon by 2 o'clock, call me or email me, because, because it is purely, it is purely an exercise where a wire got crossed here.
And I know, I know it's not intentional, I just didn't know if, if you have to make a positive action to do it.
Yeah.
Do you understand this, the nature of stuff?
Yeah, it, it needs.
It's posted.
No, no, it, it, it is an act where the paper copies, the electronic distribution list, there's a separate step that somebody has to do to attach it onto the website. So, if you don't, and, and, and I guess I say that to anybody who may be watching, you know, we, we get, if it's not, if you're looking for it and you're not seeing it Friday by 2 o'clock, let me know.
I, I mean, I'd love to come see you guys, but if I look at the agenda and there's nothing interesting, maybe I'd stay home.
Well, get that posted.
Yeah, so.
Ah, okay, don't tempt me.
Get that, get that posted. I'll just stay home. Um, you know, I, I wanna thank you for the, for the explanation on the property. Now, you spoke about this property a few times, and people at home never knew the situation. We just hear property, the taxes, fine or no fine. So, it's good sometimes to, I understand you don't wanna go in every gruesome detail, but it's good to, to go into a little bit more detail, just for the people at home, because there are people watching to know what's going on. Yeah, I did have some little issue with the, the fine also, but, you know, I have a bigger issue with, um, with signing a multi-year lease without, you know, legislative body approval. So, I understand, we, you wouldn't even probably be discussing that issue if it wasn't for the fact that we needed to come up with the money to buy a, a cruiser. And, and I think it's clear, we do need cruisers in this town, because we are running on some old stuff. But I, but I have a question, I guess moving forward too. It, it seems kind of a waste, I don't know what's gonna happen with that cruiser that needs $14,000 for repair, but my opinion on that is, for $14,000 to get a brand-new engine, brand-new drivetrain, entire new suspension, I, I don't, I, I might be missing something unless there's something else going on that you guys are not talking about, because that is a vehicle. What, you know, a drivetrain, complete suspension, an engine is a vehicle. That is, so that makes it, so, again, unless there's something going on that you guys are not talking about, because it's not a very old vehicle, and if there's no body rot, it seems like to have a good backup vehicle with no miles on it. And even the suspension too, is what takes the abuse. Okay, um, one, the, the main thing I came to speak about was, um, there's gonna be a, a hearing on September 5th, and, you know, also, I'm sure you guys know about it, it's gonna be held here. It was, and, and I know this has nothing to do with you guys, you didn't initiate anything, but there was a petition warrant, a petition to prohibit the use of gas motor boats on Darapon Litchfield made to the Marine Patrol Headquarters in Guilford, made by Richard Husband, and he did get the 25 signatures. I guess all you guys are aware that it's happening, right? Okay, um, and I just wanna, I guess any other further, any talking about it is helpful to get the people in the audience or watching at home to know what's going on. But, most important thing that I wanna ask you guys is, um, some of the, I'm, I'm trying to educate myself, and if anybody else could help me, that would be great. The, part of the petition says Darapon is home to a vast variety of wildlife, which it is, and it's too small to absorb the impact of gasoline and oil in its waters without damage to the ecosystem. Are we having, is that an issue in this town, or we have?
You're asking us questions, Mr. Pascucci, that I don't believe any of us have the answers to.
And that, that is all I'm asking. If you don't have the answer, I'm, because I don't know who to ask.
Well, I would suggest going to, as, on the web, I told you the best place to go.
I did do that, and I.
Could be Mr. Husband who filed the petition, or to maybe the Conservation Commission, I would guess.
I, I did, and I'm still in the process of asking questions.
DES is another.
Department of Environmental Services.
Thank you. You see, that, that's all I'm asking from you guys right now, because the average person sees this and they have no clue. Somebody could say anything they want.
See, DES can't, just through.
Okay.
My day-to-day things, DES.
DES doesn't control, control this. This is controlled by the Department of Safety.
And it, this.
But DES would be able to tell you how they monitor, how they measure, and.
Fair enough. Now, this is fact-finding for me, as people elected to represent us, because I don't know where to go, and I'm trying to educate myself on this, and I know, again, you have no, this is nothing that you're, you tie the leash around and you're dragging through the system. I know you guys have nothing to do with this. So, again, this is the next question, and, and maybe I could talk to the police, if, if that's where you could direct me. It says it's too small for fast boats. I think of a fast boat as, you know, 22-foot, 20, with a 50 or 100 horsepower engine on it. I don't, two or five horsepower's not a fast boat. Does anybody or you, the board know, are we having 20-foot Chris Crafts on there? Nothing like that, that you're aware of? Would the police know? Who, who could I ask about that?
Mr. Husband.
Same thing, okay. Got it. And, uh, I think there was one more, uh, and, and then the same thing with, uh, our, again, it says, uh, the pond is too small for fast boats with propellers around swimmers. Uh, is a lot of people swimming there?
My knowledge of it, which is hearing kids screaming and shouting and jumping in water and stuff like that, is during the hot days of summer, there's a bunch of folks that go down there swimming.
Okay, 'cause I have seen people fish in there pretty regularly, and I've never noticed people, um, okay, so, yeah, I do have, I spoke with, up at the Marine Patrol Headquarters, the Hearings Bureau attorney I spoke with, I gotta note out to Mr. Husband, I hope to speak with him before the hearing. Now, the last thing, I, regardless of what your opinion is on this, and I don't know where, where you stand on the ban or not, uh, you know, I, I'd like to just request, if any of you guys, or all you guys, could attend this hearing, I mean, we do elect you to represent us, and I'm not saying as an official, you know, I'm not saying you make a, a motion right now and all the great, because we don't know what the people in town think. But I think it would be good to hear, you know, your opinion, Mr. Perry, Mr. Byron, and, you know, all of you guys at the hearing, because, you know, help us out a little bit. You guys are elected, you guys are supposed to kinda either know some of this stuff, or help educate us, um, onto what's best. Because looking at this at face value, one would think there's, you know, 75 horsepower boats buzzing across there, spilling oil all the time, and I don't believe that's the case, and I think, uh, it would be helpful, again, as our reps, to, um, to, uh, maybe get to that hearing, or at least if you can't make it, write a letter as to your opinion if you really think this ban should take place. Can I just ask the rest of the meeting? Do you have any?
Oh. So, to partly answer your question, Mr. Hope, I do know is going to attend the meeting, he's gonna testify concerning the fact that the Litchfield Fire Department uses that lake as a, or a pond, whatever you wanna call it, as a site for practice, which includes a motor boat. And my review of state law, and also an attorney's review of state law indicates that there's no exception for emergency personnel, with the exception of state personnel. So, if this were to pass, there would not be even the authority, if somebody's drowning in the middle of the lake, to launch Litchfield's rescue boat and go get them. Now, I'm sure the Chief Freitzel would say it'll be a cold day in hell before he doesn't respond.
Plus would I.
But, needless to say, that would be the, the state law.
I guess just one final thing, um, if anybody in this room know, that knows me, um, my first inclination would be this, I, I'm, well, which I am gonna speak against the ban, because I'm immediately against bans as my default position, unless proved seriously otherwise. Uh, if, like I said, the oil is an issue, and if we have herons and mallards and ducks and turtles washing up dead on the shore, well, by all means, we, we can't allow that to happen. I don't see that happening. I think the, the wording used here, and again, I'm gonna bring this up at the hearing, it was, it's, it's vague enough to give people the impression that there's a problem, but I don't believe any of it's true, because I think if any boats are on there, it's probably the little two horsepowers, maybe a granddad with his granddaughter or something, they wanna go out and don't feel like rowing. Uh, I have a problem with banning that, but I'm trying to learn the facts, and I got two more weeks to do my research. I hope to speak to Mr. Husband, I will call the DES to find out if they have anywhere. I gotta tell you, Captain Timothy Dunleavy was very helpful, and so was, uh, the attorney at the Hearings Bureau, they are very helpful people, and they did point me in other, in other places to go look, but I just want an educated decision to be made, and not an emotional one, or a personal, or a selfish decision. So, as long as facts are produced, then the hearing will go the way it goes.
Chris, you might also wanna reach out to Joan McKibben.
Okay.
Because she may have a different method to get you in touch with Mr. Husband as
well.
Okay. And it would be Jade McKibben at, I mean, the same thing, just Jade?
Yep. I'm not exactly sure what.
Right, it's just her, the spelling of a name, first initial spelling.
And you know, you know how to find me. Feel free to send it to me and ask me to forward it.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chris.
Night. Any other members of the public wish to? Very none, we'll move on then. Mr. Hope, I think we're on other funds.
Other funds. Just, we had talked a couple of weeks ago about the listing of things known as other funds. Wanted to put together some notes on that. I reorganized the list a little bit for those things that are limited purpose, things that exist for accounting purposes, ongoing special funds, police special purpose funds. You know, we've talked about a couple already tonight, double back on a few more. The one that I wanted to bring up tonight, because it seemed to be a small one that we could clean up, was the Fire Pond article, which appears to have been created from 1981 warrant article number 21, to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 to dredge a fire pond on Colby Brook. Nothing in the article suggests this article was intended to be non-lapsing. To that end, the money should have reverted to the general fund sometime over the past 30 years. Normally, you know, we had articles this past year where we made them non-lapsing, you know, or we let them sit for a couple of years, and then they lapsed. No language in there for that. So I think that we've been carrying this unnecessarily for 30-some years.
Yes.
And by pure accounting purposes, it should have gone away. Leave aside the merits of fire ponds otherwise. So, since it hasn't happened, I guess my recommendation is the board recognize that, and that the towns be corrected to no longer carry the fire pond as a separate fund, and to show those funds as part of the general fund balance.
You know what the story was with that? I remember intimately, we couldn't give. Colby Brook at the time was running very well, had a lot of water, and had no hydrants in the north end, and it was a prime source of water for anything up in there, especially the barns and everything. And so we asked around, and said, gee, if we could put a dry hydrant in there. And we went to the state, and they said, yes, you, no problem putting, but you got to get permission, the landowner or at some point, because something upstream would have, well, that solved that. As you can see, that dry hydrant was never put in.
So I'll make a motion, the board of selectmen closes the fund out for the full amount of the fund, and deposits all the money from the fund, principal plus interest, into the general fund.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Restained? Motion carries 4-0-0.
So, I'm going to keep chipping away as, you know, obviously, some of these ones require some, you know, as you can imagine, that one required a little research to ferret that out, so.
Ferrets used to be illegal. Transportation alternatives.
Transportation Alternatives Program. A couple of weeks ago, when Road Agent was in, we talked about the transportation, what's now called the Transportation Alternatives Program. Previous lives, it had been transportation enhancements, a variety of different names. Basically, federal funding for non-road projects, like sidewalks, bike paths, that sort of thing. I submitted paperwork, sort of a preliminary letter of interest, because that was what we decided we were going to do at the last meeting, to sort of have a place in line. The notion was extending the bike path, type sidewalks, potentially down to middle school. The next step is the mandatory meeting in Concord in September, from my Transportation Advisory Committee meeting at NRPC. I know the competition is pretty full for a relatively small bucket of money. And I wanted to confirm that we are interested in continuing to pursue this with the grant application due the end of September. This does require a 20% local match for whatever project we pursue. So it's not exactly clear that we have money in hand. And we could put together an application that takes some of the old bike fund money that we're carrying on the books, which we have been using for maintenance and repair of the bike path. You know, about $60,000 in there, which is why you never see bike path-related costs in the Highway Department budget. Of course, if we could use, if we use $60,000 of that as our share, then we could get this extension, but then we would have no money for repair. So I guess we're getting to the point where, you know, I need to know if we're serious about this or not. Because if we are serious, then I need to go spend a day in Concord at the application workshop, and spend some time in September writing an application.
What's the decision of the board? Which way would you like to go?
How long ago did this conversation start? Three years ago?
About the sidewalk?
Yep.
Probably three years ago, because I think it was in 12 that we put, we put in our, so we, I would go back to 11, because I think we had an article in 12 trying to raise some engineering money.
380-something thousand.
Yeah. Well, we were just trying to raise engineering money, I think, at the time. But we, but it had a future construction price tag attached to it.
Somebody asked if that be amended onto the warrant article, and that it was, which was basically a guesstimate at best.
Right.
So if you're asking the question, selectmen, this just came up in the past three months, where.
This specific source was a very short window of opportunity.
I remember in my past days as a selectman, that this was talked about, and I knew that something was brought forward, so I was wondering what the result of that was, because it was.
The warrant article, original warrant article failed.
Right, so there is no engineering done, because they said they had to do the engineering of it, because the path that they had on paper from before didn't show, whatever, slopes and all that and everything on it, right?
I forget.
Yeah, we didn't have slopes and boundaries, there were spots where we didn't know where our right-of-way was, so we had to do some survey work to figure that out.
So what would those engineering costs be?
Um.
And your guesstimate?
Well, I can.
Probably 20,000.
Let's see. I can tell you that in 2012, I'll tell you how much we asked for. Maybe. Really? Maybe not. Huh. I, you know, I'm starting to wonder if we asked in 2011.
Very well could be, I don't know. If you don't have the answer to that, then.
Uh, well, I'm, I have all of them here, so.
If you have the opportunity, you can look on the town's webpage and see what the annual report says.
Well, I can look at all of the warrants that I have right here too, so, yeah, I mean, I'm basically looking at the same thing. I'm just trying to find where. Where we actually asked for it.
Back in the day, there was a letter that was written by, I was going to say, I don't know, a student that was in town that had asked about the exploration of this project.
Right.
Has there been any other interest in getting this done?
No. Not that I'm aware of anyways. This came up simply as we had the road agent in here to discuss future projects for the town for 2015. And at that point in time, I took the opportunity to tie the two of them together, because there was in our informational package, a request for Transportation Alternative Program Funds and Grants were opening up, and we only had a couple of weeks in order to put in a notice of interest. And as the board would not be meeting before that expiry, it made sense to try and see if we wanted to do anything on it.
12-5, and it was actually in 2013.
12-5.
That way, that, yeah, 12,005, and we asked in the warrant of 2013 for that.
That seemed low.
Yeah, it probably was.
So, with that, the grants that are out there?
Mm-hmm.
How much are we talking?
Um, we're talking, you know, I think I put a placeholder in of $400,000.
Oh, so, okay.
Because it, I, well, because if you're going to do it, you got to apply for everything. I can't get just engineering money. There's like a window of, it's got to be at least $100,000 a project up to 400.
That's what I was hoping to hear you say, because I was afraid we were going to go in and get $30,000 or $50,000 of a $300,000 project and not be worth it.
Right.
So, okay, I have more interest now.
So, the question is, do we want to do anything with this, or we just let it die a natural death?
Now give Jason something to do.
Oh, gee.
Um, yeah, thanks.
Is it in our best interest, since there hasn't been that much interest in that, is it in our best interest to pursue this, or?
I don't think it's a bad.
Should we pursue it as an informational item, or once we take this step, are we?
What's, what's the town's share? 25%?
20%.
So at 400,000, 20% is 80,000. So do you have 80,000 to spend?
Well, we got 60.
Yeah, but at that point, if you spend the 60, plus an additional 20 from somewhere else, you're going to be in a situation where you're not going to be, unless you appropriate the funds, repairing the bike path.
As I say, yeah, we'll definitely maintain the bike path. All right, so, well, it's like saying we can't maintain our roads. Well, no, not really. It works into the budget. No, no, not, no, that's not what.
I guess what I would say is, from my end on this, looking at, looking at the application process, looking at some of the other projects that are in the region that we're competing, competing with, we don't, we don't have a very strong case here. We, you know, we don't have sort of a strong history of sort of public input, discussion, master plan that shows this is something we desire, so I can't really, I mean, we have the strength of, the bike path is wildly successful, so, you know.
We had, last time we applied for funds, we had the ability to say, we've got a bike path, it comes up to the intersection of Hillcrest and Albuquerque, we want to take it even further.
Mm-hmm.
And we could show that it was in our master plan, and we could show all types of stuff. None of this exists in any documents anywhere else.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it is a relatively flimsy base upon which to build an application. That said, this is a program that comes out every couple of years. I think the piece that is constructive, if we decide not to pursue it this time, is if we genuinely do have an interest in revisiting this notion of extending the bike path in some way, we owe it to ourselves to have some further conversations about it over the next couple of years, to lay a foundation for a more credible application in the future.
Chairman, I'll move that we defer consideration for this round.
We have a motion, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
We have a second discussion. Very none, all those in favor of deferring further consideration of the alternative transportation program for constructing a sidewalk down Pinecrest, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries 4-0-0, so you don't have to go to Concord. Next item.
Wastewater planning? Wastewater planning, all right. Again, another of these revisiting issues from the past. A few years ago, we raised the issue of studying alternatives for wastewater system connections. Figuring out, the idea was, how do we get a basic plan together to figure out what a system would look like, what hoops we have to jump through, which of our neighbors would we go to? So if something ever came in that needed a wastewater system, we would be prepared. The idea being, we're looking at a multi-year process probably, so anybody who came in and said, yeah, I'll, probably not going to wait for that. At the time, we intended to use funds on hand from industrial development, going back to that list of other funds that we talked about.
That's the amount of, what, 16,000, I think?
Yeah, I think 16.
And some change.
16 and some change, I think, let me just pull up what we have now. 16,000, 614. The, and we needed some additional funds from general funds, so we had a warrant article to raise those. That article was defeated. The Industrial Development Fund was created from donations from developers in 1987 for the purpose of engineering and related work to determine the viability of connecting to neighboring communities' utilities. So.
The purpose of the money, on the bottom line, is that it's exactly for the purpose it's created.
The purpose of the fund from the donations in 1987 was to do this. We have kept them on the books from 1987. And so doubling back again now, saying, we have the ability now to fund this project using those industrial development funds that were donated years ago, and a private donation today, and we could proceed without requiring any additional funding from the general fund or taxation.
So the bottom line on it is, I was approached by a citizen who felt that this was an important thing that the town considered doing, and that citizen has stated that they would be willing to fund that amount of money in order to make this happen. The amount of money could be up to, what was it, you had checked and clarified?
Um, the scope, I had attached a sample scope from 2012, we're up to about $30,000.
Right. So the bottom line on it is, this could potentially be funded, as is with the donation from the citizen, and with the monies that are available in the.
In that industrial development fund?
Industrial development fund.
That were donated for that money.
Or the other option is, we go forward with a warrant article showing the same thing. Now, what was the vote, was pretty radically turned down, right, if I remember correctly?
I think it was, yeah, I don't have that right here, but it was, it was a pretty.
It wasn't a close vote, as put.
It wasn't a close vote.
Mr. Chairman, the opportunity though is here, in the event that we were to have the opportunity to have a larger business move in to town, wouldn't we need, wouldn't this be an important link in that chain to have completed?
The, the initial work that was done on this was to try and determine in the lands to the south of town, which are commercial industrial, and to the north of town, which are commercial and commercial industrial, what we would have to do in order to connect into sewer systems up there and to the south to support a business, if that's what came to town. The concern that at least I have is that if a, if a builder comes in, and they need sewerage, and they decide they're going to run a sewer line from their business that they established in the south part of town, connect into Hudson, first off, we have no knowledge of what size pipe to put in, we have no knowledge of what we have to hold the developer to, we have no knowledge of how much waste they can generate, we have no knowledge of how much other people who could connect into that would generate, and we're basically at a loss.
So this would solve it?
This would solve it, and the intention was, was not to put sewerage into Litchfield. The intention was to do a study so that we would have that information and be able to have that information in case, you know, somebody decided that they're buying the property.
And I remember these discussions, but not as well as you do, and I think they're important, huh? I'll move that we proceed with this.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second that. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Chime in a minute, that, you know, I think the, the concern from, you know, the question, you know, it's sort of hard, you know, yes, an article was defeated, and hindsight's 20-20. Was it, well, we don't want sewer, we don't want to spend the money, we thought we were building a sewer? I mean, you know, whatever option, wherever you fall on that spectrum, you will be sure that's what the no vote means. You know, I guess, all this, this buys a plan. This is sort of us doing our due diligence for future planning of the town. We're not building a sewer system at the end of this, we're going to have a binder. You're buying a binder, really, you know? If at some point in the future, the opportunity comes up, yeah, you might, you might take a plan to the townspeople.
What this will do is have the answers that I don't think people had the last time they voted.
No, at the other side of the coin, I'm just personally concerned that what we, my personal belief is, we probably ought to bring it to the voters. That's my thinking. I mean, I know the voters turned it down, and they may turn it down again, and that's fine. That's up to the people of the town. But I think that, and I know that this board can determine otherwise, but I think it's.
I think without, personally, I think without impacting the tax rate, this has been going on since the 1980s, I, I think in the event that we have an opportunity to reduce pressure on our tax rate, I think it's important to move ahead.
Well, I think.
Because there's no impact on the tax rate, and produce a report that we could show.
Yeah. My only, my only thinking was that we could show the same thing in a warrant article, that it wouldn't impact the tax rate. If that individual's still willing to make the.
I, I'm not sure that the explanation can be given well enough to have that be successful. I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
Anyway, I mean.
Any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Stayed? Motion carries 3-1-0. So Jason, we have information from the consulting firm?
Uh-huh.
I think that we should not just go forward with that, but I would suggest that we put that out for bid. I think that's the right way to do it. Makes sense?
Yeah. Said, said somewhat painfully by the person who will have to write the bid document, but yes, procedurally, you are correct, that's the right thing to do.
I think, I think it's the right thing to do, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll be honest, the context, just so you guys know, the proposal I got is some, is an engineer that I've worked with in the past, that I had a relationship with, I said, can you just, like? with. I said, can you just, like, help frame this out for me?
So, yeah, I don't want you to think that, the only point is, we ought to make it a fair, open bidding process, that's all.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, then, triple E.
Triple E. There has been a, last week was a flurry of activity at the end of the week. The latest update is, we are now in the triple E-infested mosquito time of year, so being aware of that, being, you know, wearing, wearing long sleeves is appropriate, and bug repellent with DEET is the best thing you can do.
So, so just to, let me do it this way. We have not had any incidents in town of positive triple E, is that correct?
That is correct.
We have had positive triple E sites in London Dairy?
No, in Dairy and Candia.
Dairy and Candia. So in the surrounding communities or local communities, there is some triple E. I believe that the, that the mosquito control district has taken a tact of doing barrier spraying, and they're going to do that when?
You're making my next point. That's what I, that's what I'm leading up to.
Let's move it, Mr. Hoke.
Well, you know, the barrier spraying is going to be on Wednesday night, Wednesday, August 27th. Now, bear in mind that those, that those are, that's done in athletic fields. So my earlier advice is more relevant to the population at large. Don't think because we're spraying around the fields that you and your backyard are magically protected.
I am.
So the, the personal protection and the awareness is the best thing, but the heightened level of that will be the spraying around the fields, and that is included as part of the service contract that we have with the company that manages the whole mosquito control process for us.
The other thing, Mr. Perry, if you can make sure that this gets discussed at the rec commission tomorrow night as well, because they're supposed to, I think the mosquito control, if I saw my emails correctly, was going to request that the coaches warn their.
It's already been.
The disciples and stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
Being part of the email list for the rec department, they've already notified the heads of all the leagues, and also being a coach in a few of those leagues, I've also received it again from them. So I know that at least two of the leagues have sent that out again. So I've gotten the same email at least four times now. So at least I know the word is getting out. The question I have, though, is this, and this should probably go to the mosquito control district, but it is a question that I'd like to raise, is that we protect the ballfields and the schools. Why don't we protect what's used the most at dusk, which is probably the bike path?
For discussion at a later date.
It's a good point.
It is a good point.
That's a very good point. I will pass that along.
Okay. I don't know, I see a lot of people walking right, right up to Doc. Anything else on this?
Nope.
Moving right along, Mr. Hoke.
Just a heads up that I've posted, and this will be hanging out for a little while on here, the municipal association policy conference at one of our meetings in September, you should take a look at the policies that are there, determine who you may want to have as your voting delegate. We need to decide that by September 19th, and if you want to give people any direction, whoever that delegate is. And you can't send me because I'm not available that day.
I'll vote for both of us.
You can one at each hand.
One at each hand.
So, I'm, I'm not looking for the decision on that now, because there's some material to read there. I wanted to make sure you knew it was there and read through it, and you'll see it at a, you know, probably at our next meeting on, for schedule.
Okay. Going to selectmen reports. Are there any selectmen reports?
Consultation, I'm sorry, recreation meeting tomorrow night that I'm going to attend, bring up these issues, and I'll be reporting back tomorrow.
Anything else on the rest of the board? Budget committee does not meet during the month of August, so.
I believe, do you want to talk about budget committee's training request?
I can. The budget committee has put a request in for training, that they want to have an onsite training to the amount of, what is it, four hundred and something dollars?
I think about four hundred and some dollars.
Four hundred and fifty dollars, give or take.
They have the money in their budget?
No.
No.
They could request it for next year.
What kind of training are they looking for?
I think it's basically the responsibilities of the budget committee. So if this board wants to fund that, that's fine. If the board doesn't, then I have no idea what the budget committee will do.
Yeah, we're looking for money for cruising.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think it's a bad thing to have them trained.
Yeah, right.
It's, they're the ultimate budget that we're going to have to follow. If they want the training, they should have the training.
How much is the money?
Five hundred bucks.
Four hundred and fifty, something like that.
Yeah, I think it's like four hundred bucks, so.
I would like to make a motion to approve up to five hundred dollars for training for the budget committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Where are you going to take this from?
Legal.
What are we currently standing at, legal?
We are projecting well below.
Say up to what?
Below budget.
Five hundred. Now, the only question I have is, the chairman made a comment to at least me, that he was going to check with the chairman of the budget committee on this. I have no idea what resulted from his discussions with the chairman of the budget committee.
Chairman, what chairman?
John.
Our chair.
John.
Okay. For now, I was going to talk with the chair of the budget committee. Do we have an official request from them, or?
I have no.
I mean, we're voting.
They took, they took, they took a motion to do it.
But did they transmit it to us? I mean.
No.
Can, can we hold up until John talks to?
Maybe Jason knows what the answer is. I don't know. He didn't tell me.
The last, the last I saw is that, oh, actually, it's 475. The message I'm seeing is, the committee discussed cost of 475 for private training versus the cost of 525 for all members to attend the work, the budget workshop scheduled September 18th. That's referring to the NHMA does an annual budget workshop. We budget, we budget for the new members to attend.
Yep.
They decided private workshop was better dollar spent, of course, and was asked how it would be paid for. There's mentioned there was some money in training. Thought Frank said that it would, this is from budget committee chair, I thought Frank said it would just mean Jason moving money around, but it could be done.
Yeah.
So there was no official request?
No, I, but we're talking, I mean, to be fair, we're kind of talking small potatoes. These are kind of the things that we shuffle internally. If you'd like to vote on all of those changes, we, I can certainly have you do all of them, but.
No, not at all, but I, I just would like to hold off and to see what John.
Okay, so let me dig through this, so I can, do, do either the person who made the motion, the person who's second, wish to withdraw the motion to allow?
Until John talks, until we get a.
It's up to you. If you want to take a vote, I'm happy to take a vote.
If the budget committee has already asked for this training, I think that we should give them the training they are asking for. I don't.
So the answer to my question is no, you're not?
No.
Okay, that's fine. So we're moving ahead with the vote. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Staying? Motion carries three, one, zero.
And the only reason, if I might, Mr. Chair, is I just would like to give our chair the option, with the courtesy of hearing his discussion with the chair of the budget committee.
I certainly have no problem with the training, I think it, but, you know, here we are, you know, we're talking funds, and I, maybe this was taken care of, maybe it wasn't.
They have the option to do that anyway. So.
That's the only reason that I wanted to hold off.
Okay, any other selectmen reports? Hearing none, then, we'll move, there were no items moved from consent, so we'll go into other business that was requested. Mr. Bork, you requested something on flagpoles.
Yes, I was approached by a resident of the town, in which we may have one, but I have not seen one in town. He asked me why we do not have a state flag on any of our flagpoles in town, and I told him I have no idea, so.
I thought there was one down in front of the historic building.
Nope.
Not a state flag.
Nope. So he had asked me if I could kindly.
I flag one of each at my house.
Yeah. If, if we could get one. I know, Jason, you look like you want to say something, so go ahead.
We'll be ordering them. Kevin and I have talked about.
Okay.
Ordering, ordering state flags. I have asked the same question.
Okay, beautiful.
So, more just a sense of, it's just been the US flag, and the US flag gets replaced, and that's what ends up being there. So there's no sort of other decision that I know of behind it.
Okay.
I think it's a good request.
Yeah. All right, so that's, my second item is London Dairy.
Mr. Hoke, excuse me, Mr. Bork, can you just briefly describe for me what this is about?
This?
Yes.
As far as London Dairy Fishing Game?
Yes.
It's about targets, shooting targets, explosive, exploding targets.
Okay, so it's a complaint or something from people?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point in time, just to make it publicly clear, I am a member of London Dairy Fishing Game Club, so I will step off the board and ask Mr. Perry to run the, run the meeting.
All right. Let the minutes show that Frank had to step down, or chose to step down. Go ahead.
So, so Jason, Jason's aware of what's going on. I guess there's been some complaints in regards to what London Dairy Fishing Game is doing over at their club. I guess they're doing, they're doing these explosive targets, and what's happening in, in the areas of the houses around that is, these targets are actually shaking their houses when they go off. They did reach out to Jason, I'll have Jason talk on it. Whether or not there's anything we can do, I told him I did not know that, told him that maybe, you know, as a board, we could write a letter to their town, asking them what their process is, or, I know it's across town lines, so I'm not sure, you know, if there's anything we can do. So with that, I'll have Jason, Jason knows a little bit, so we'll have him talk on it.
Yeah. You know, the, I, I spoke to one of the concerned residents last week. He sort of gave me an outline of what the concerns were, and so I had followed up with an inquiry to Fishing Game Club, looking to sort of say, hey, has something changed? To give me a little bit of background, sort of trying to understand what was happening. I received a prompt response, and I'm now figuring kind of where, what may be the next guidance from there. I shared that response with the resident who raised the question. On my senses, probably the answer is not, the information provided was not a wholly satisfying response. So my, my suggestion back to that resident was that they may wish to further their conversation directly with the club, or as well as, we would be happy to reach out to, I mean, I can reach out to my colleague in London Dairy pretty easily and say, you know, this is based in your town, spilling over to ours. What's, you know, what's a good approach for us to take going forward?
See, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in the game of ammunition and explosives and things like that, but I do live in the neighborhood, and it has gotten much louder up there.
Mm-hmm.
And having discussions with other people that do know this stuff. Apparently, it's a concoction that you can mix, and when you shoot it, it explodes. Well, it's all in how you mix it, is as to how much boom, or how much whatever you get from it. So maybe if we reach out to London Dairy, have a discussion with them to maybe limit the amount of boom that they get from it?
I agree. I'm farther away, and I hear some of these things, and I'm sitting in there, and I'm going, oh my gosh. And I certainly feel for the neighbors in that area, or whoever lives over there, and I would certainly like more information on it. So I would ask that you touch base, to find out what the situation is, and certainly if, if there is something that is not approved, or if there's anything that we can do on behalf of the residents, I'd certainly encourage that.
The concern with the residents is, is what is it doing to their house? Because I guess when, when these things do go boom, their houses shake, you know, and as Mr. Perry said, he lives a little bit further down, but the residents who mainly affected back that range. So I mean, they're getting full impact of, of these targets.
Well, now, you know, if the compression or anything is anywhere near a stick of dynamite, anytime you blast, you need a permit. So I mean, it would be interesting to find out if the concussion or the compression is anywhere near that type. If it is, if the people are feeling that in their homes, that may be an interesting discussion you may want to have with the state police also.
Well, also, if they're monitoring.
Right.
If they monitor that. I'm only going from third party. I don't know this stuff.
Well, how about if we, how about if we get the information? I think that if you, I'm, before we do anything, I think it's important we get the fact.
Right, and, and again, I think I'd also sort of, you know, I think our ability to act is somewhat limited.
Right.
Anyway. I think, you know, our, our best role is sort of being the information broker and the go-between, and using the relationships that collectively we have to kind of get, to help those residents get some answers. I mean, officially, let's face it, there's very little we can do to, about a use in another town.
But I think if we get the information, that's going to be important.
Right.
Also, while we're on the subject, I know, I can't recall when the meeting was, but we had talked about this in the past, about putting a sign at the end of that access road going in there, because people, again, they're coming out of that access road, taking that right. I forget, we talked about it, it's in the meeting, meeting minutes somewhere, but, because that's, there's no outlet there, so it goes down. When they come out, if they go right, it goes to a cul-de-sac at the end of the road. So I know we had talked about possibly Jack putting a sign there. I don't know whatever happened with that, but.
And I will, I'm looking vaguely, it's only because I'm not sure, I'm trying to remember whether that ended up at this meeting, or was that, or was that simply, was that conversation at the planning board?
No, no, it was, it was one of our meetings we talked about.
Okay, because I knew that was the context.
Jack said he was signage available, that he could put his hands.
Yeah, somebody said, said, said that Jack could put, put signs there or something. It just hasn't happened, so.
Okay.
So while, while we're on.
Thanks.
The subject, I figured I'd bring that up. If he could do that, that'd be a great help as well, and again, if you can, you know who the resident is, if you can just stay in contact with him and.
Yep.
Keep him up to date, that'd be good. And that is it for me.
Okay, with that being said, there is no other items for other business. Frank, would you like to rejoin us?
[laughing]
At this time, I'll relinquish the role of chair back to Frank. Okay, are there any other items the board needs to discuss? Mr. Hoke, is there anything you have to go over?
There is nothing else I have for you.
Then I'd be glad to accept the motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
So second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Ladies and gentlemen, good night. The next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is, quickly, Mr. Hoke?
September?
I know, but.
Sorry.
Eighth? September eighth.
September eighth.
Six o'clock here at Town Hall. The other thing to be aware of is September ninth is primary day, and so the polls will be open on that day. So ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening, good night.